All right, very good. There you go. Regular meeting. And we'll start with the roll call.
President. Vice President.
President.
Treasurer Fred.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Everard.
Here.
Trustee Gayden.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
President.
Very good. Linda, I was gonna ask you to read, but I think your voice will be. We'll save it. For the consent. So Lloyd, would you take? Goal six and goal four, please.
I'd be happy to. To foster a conservative conservation ethic among the Henry County citizens, helping all of us, the basis of our interest in nature, develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of Wey. Conservation ethic asks us to assume moral duty, become educated about conservation issues, and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And goal four is to interpret and promote the overall significance of natural and cultural resources, and to promote public understanding and support district land management rights.
Very good. Ray, would you move in?
Yep. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in the Henry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depend on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully divided cities and towns, being a beautiful and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number five, we will work vigilantly to influence the health and well-being of our county.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do we have to vote to adopt the agenda or do we just go right down?
I should have taken more than the second without the agenda.
Okay. And here are the motions, please.
I make the motion for the agenda as is.
Second, Lloyd, okay, the ball, please.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Gayden.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Fred.
Yes.
President Nico.
Yes. Okay, Elizabeth, are you going to introduce the agenda?
Well, as an honor, I'm gonna have our different department managers and leads that are doing team members, and this is part of a new change. We're doing this not on a monthly basis, but we're kind of getting everybody stacked up here to do it so to be most efficient. So I'm gonna start off and have Chief King introduce our first team member.
Yeah, so I am so happy to introduce to everybody our new police administrative coordinator, Arturo Diaz. Arturo comes to us with a diverse background. He's actually worked with a variety of different police departments in community service officer and records department roles. And so we are so happy to have him here, and I'd like to, I know he's there with you tonight, so I'd like to give him a few seconds just to tell you a little bit more about himself.
Hello, everybody. As Chief said, I am new here, so I'm just finishing off about three months with the district. I come from a police background of, from the village of Huntley, the village of Carpenterville, and then doing a similar role that I am doing now from the city of Elton. And so for me, one of the most exciting parts about being here is still being able to be part of the police department. That has always been something that has interested me. I like working with the public and the different opportunities that come with it, and especially that come with the district. Speaking of, I have a suite meeting that I'm going to afterward. And so that in and of itself, to have those opportunities to work with the public, work with the the different organizations that we have, a lot of the events, that is, it's very exciting for me. And I hope to be able to bring my experiences, both from when I was out working on the rainy days on the street, on the snowy days, but also a lot of what I have done before, again, in administrative roles, with just different programs and different procedures and ways of doing things, to be able to just bring all that in here to be able to continue the day-to-day operations. So I'm very excited to be here. I'm thankful to have somebody like Chief King. As supervisor, I am very fond of her, the environment that she creates, her open door policy, and just very somebody, very easy to work with. And so I'm very fortunate and I am very happy to be where I am at and the position I am at. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to be here and again, to be able to introduce myself a little bit.
We appreciate your enthusiasm. And next, Elizabeth.
I'm gonna have our planning development manager, Amy.
Well, keep mine short and sweet if you want to say it forward too, but I'm just really grateful to have the opportunity to introduce Jen to you. She grew up here. She has a degree in landscape architecture from New Levi, University of Illinois. She's a licensed landscape architect. She too comes with lots of experience, lots of different perspectives. From a landscape career, she's done residential, large scape, industrial park, all with native sort of sustainability in mind. She also built a successful construction company with her husband. So has, again, a great perspective on a lot of different areas that we fit right into what the district is trying to do and needed to do. She's involved with community, with the Sustainability Committee in Fisalay, with defenders. She's a member of the Illinois Landscape Contractor Association. I can go on about her stats, but I just really like having her company. So again, it's just really great to have her. Just saying, I'm really happy to be here. Happy to be part of this group of people in this room.
Welcome aboard.
And the natural resources manager, Brad Woodson.
Well, we have two tonight, so our person is Fernando Hernandez. So Fernando came with about eight years of experience, had the degree from University of Milwaukee. But he worked for Wisconsin DNR, University of Minnesota Arboretum, and in some private industry with Landy Lot Services. So he came with a lot of certifications and background from heavy equipment, pesticide, burning, so he was ready to go with what we wanted. So Fernando, as I said, thank you.
I just wanna say, I'm really happy to be working for such a well-known organization and been enjoying myself here for the last two months so far and just looking to put in some big work and contribute to all these wonderful causes that we're all working towards.
So Brendan is actually from the Woodstock area, and he was a seasonal with us last year, is a seasonal with us this year. He has a degree from the University of Tampa, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so not necessarily marine biology, but biology.
Marine biology, general biology, so I'm more using the general.
Oh, no, he's been with us, and now he's our habitat, I guess it was a two-year position that the district has. So he'll be here for, hopefully, at least two years, and still a fantastic guy.
So I'm very happy to be working for McHenry County specifically. I have something to be biased from growing up here, I grew up in Wonder Lake, and still in Wonder Lake. So, you know, I always say my grandparents are active property, Jason, National Park, I grew up walking the trails, and I'm, you know, such an inherent bias for the district. So being able to work here is, it did come true, of course. That's why I kind of came on, you know, multiple times now, and happy to be here. I'm thankful for the opportunities I've been given, working under my current supervisors, Lori Ryan and Sidney Tavon's gear, playing colleges and wildlife biologist, I've learned so much, and still have plenty more to learn. Hopefully, I'll get to stick around long enough that I'll, you know, retain a lot of information, so thank you very much.
I will here. So one of the things that the board is very much aware has been our professional development and certifications and growth with every area employees with to spread their wings and learn more. And I want to recognize, Stephanie Michael took it upon herself to study and obtain the certification from the National Recreation Park Association, which is a CPRP. So we want to congratulate her on those efforts. And again, like we said before, once you obtain that status, in order to maintain that, you have to continue to seek educational opportunities and participate in community education units and the fresh. So again, congratulations, Steph. Please, he's online.
Stephanie has helped me with many of my technical problems related to the internet. Stephanie, would you like to say anything for?
Not really, but thank you.
Well said.
And the last I have is, and trustee Zimmerman did join us, with Brendan Smith and Lori Ryan. The St. Charles Park District had submitted us to the Illinois Association of Practice. You can see many of the awards on the wall in this room. We have been a regular recipient, but this time we did not submit this particular award. St. Charles Park District did for work with the Forest District of King County, or their district of Cook County, and then us, basically taking the, restoring of a fenn, which is also the Illinois Nature Preservation Commission, right? And then you can probably talk about the project specifically, but sharing of the seed and the genetic diversity to build on something, and then again, working across not only county lines, but that's something that's larger than us all. So I don't know if you have any comments about the project?
So the goal of the project is obviously that, you know, increase our sharing potential with other districts and recreation groups. To make diversity in a lot of these areas, especially even state parks, is the biggest risk to a lot of these duties. If there's not enough genetic diversity going from the outside, they're in bringing them, then people end up dying off. So creating this initiative helps us ensure that we have longevity of these duties that are, you know, in decline.
And Dave Swagler was also there for the dinner. Dave was our conservation champion, awardee, land fear, or his work and the work that he's done. And again, it was great to be able to have him there to celebrate. Trustees Zimmerman, you were present as well, so I mean. Thoughts you had about the evening?
I don't know. I've heard about the event, obviously many, many years, but I've never attended it. So it was such a pleasure to attend. You know, from a trustee's perspective, it's, it's, you know, a lot of awards go out to the volunteers in the industry, you know, like ourselves, but people that are also out there getting dirty and sweaty and just, you know, enjoying keeping up with districts, you know, all over Illinois. And it was, it's just, it's inspiring to hear some of these stories and see some of these people. I know the one that sticks out to me was the lady that has been making comfort bears for how many years? It was like thirty years? She's made thousands and thousands, it couldn't even count, how many comfort bears she had made with one of these park districts to give to the hospital. So yeah, just so many stories, it's really rewarding to go and get to meet obviously other people, you know, in other park districts. It's such a great meeting. So next year, you can go, Jay.
Well, that's a nice segue into trustee reports, so if any of the trustees wish to tell us what they've been doing. I know Lloyd and Chris have been participating in the working group and we will be hearing further from them in a couple of weeks. But they've been working with the staff on and particularly with Andy Diallick on sorting out our revenue options going forward. Anyone else wish to jump in?
I don't know, I thought we had a thing for meetings in town. This is part of it.
Right? Yeah.
Oh, I could. A meeting was a, meeting was a twelve at this month. Peter Austin was there, and then a gentleman from DOT, Henry County DOT. And Pete Austin talked about rural internet. That there's a lot of money available, both federal and, and I guess state. They're just throwing money now. So.
Can I get some?
They're trying to work like three loops, I guess, some over in Bayou and then out west by me, and then maybe southwest, I guess. So it's, it's, it's common.
Verizon, they couldn't hook us up with the.
And then DOT, that was kind of about the, you know, the more roundabouts and farmers thought of trying to navigate those, and just the public in general concerns. You know, when you're not used to it, there's, especially older people, you can get a lot of trouble.
Change of minds, definitely.
Oh, and then one other thing, there's, we always have a board member roundtable, there's always the same gentleman, he always complains about the Casabes. I won't not mention any names, but Beavers, there's a Beaver problem, and we have it too. So of course, he's, you know, a lot of habits athlete, and they're kind of getting out of control.
I think Gabe Powers is our point man.
I'm just, we named the message, so.
And I'm sure, and I'll always direct them back to, we'll have a conversation.
Thank you. All right, so I guess we're coming up to the highlight. Well, of course, we should. I don't have anything specific to say, so I'm gonna ask Kelly, what she would like to report.
Just a couple of things. So we had some resolutions that we passed last, well, a week ago to create artificial and living snow fence contracts with farmers. We set new salary ranges for employees and our paper performance guidelines for next year. We also passed a resolution to quick take exercise quick take powers of eminent domain for the completion of the highway project on Randall Road. So that's north of Acorn up to Ackman, I think. There was also, you guys may have read it in the paper, robust debate about some resolutions with the Safety Act and Hospital 3447. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me, I'm not gonna get into it here, let's probably apply. I heard today that the new training center and gun range for the county municipality police office, police departments and the sheriff, it's, they're starting to receive bids for the remodel, so that's starting to go. And then for review, we have some ordinances, a new updated public health ordinance, new building code and residential code updates. And then the levy resolution and the budget resolution, they are separate on the different resolutions, but they have talked about putting them together as one. Because what happened last year is that we passed the budget, and then the levy failed, or the, you know, the levy failed because we were adding CPI. So we ended up passing a levy ordinance that did not match the budget. So they're trying to tie it together, but I don't know if it's gonna happen. So the levy, just so you guys know, we are taking 1.5 million of our ARPA money that we have that was supposed to put to grants, go after grants, that's gonna be going toward our budget. We are taking 500,000 in new growth, and then 990,000 of CPI, which is 27% of what we can take on CPI. Yes, because we can take 4.1 million. And so if you guys want to see any of those resolutions, I can send them. That's it.
Okay, just look at the first one, the natural snow fence. Two years ago, I saw somebody, at least not in Huntley on Main Street, they were gonna go from downtown to the high school. There was one in the north side, and then last year, there was a day. So did the program not run last year, or just that not once, that one site?
It's just up to farmers if they want to take part in it.
But another thing too, is maybe you didn't have corn there. You know, maybe they rotate from like corn and beans.
Fishwaki Valley Road, that extensive one, Chris McKee. So that's out there, just depends on participation.
Yeah, some of them don't want to do it, you know.
So they do get, they get, they get paid per acre?
Yeah.
And does it depend on the price of corn? Or is it, no, it's a thousand dollars?
Well, I think it's gotta be some incentive.
There is, yeah.
Yeah. It's gotta be more than the price of corn.
But if corn gets really high, then they usually want to plow it down, because it's not gonna be, because they have to take out all their equipment again in the spring, that's the hard part. So if we could find some way to make it easier on the farmers in the spring, then I think it'd come well, just as.
Thanks.
All right, Kelly, thank you. It's always informative.
Can you guys, green drinks sort of been one, but I was out of town in California in Denver during that time, so anybody else went, I think it was on diesel. Get rid of diesel in the county, and maybe it was able to. If not, the next one's coming up, for split, say, November, and the topic is electrification, it's the recharging storage stations.
All right, then, do we have any members of the public, either here in the audience or out in the homeland?
There's no one.
Okay, well, we're gonna quickly move out of there.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're coming to the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I think it works a lot with.
12.1, approval of minutes of previous meetings, 12.1 H, July 15, 2021, committee of the whole executive session amended. 12.1B, August 18, 2022, committee of the whole executive session. 12.1C, September 12, 2022, committee of the whole. 12.1D, September 15. Regular meeting. 12.1E, September 27, 2022, special call meeting. Point two, acceptance of the treasurer's report. 12.1, 12.2A, acceptance of treasurer's report for September 3 of 2022, as presented. 12.2B, acceptance, acceptance of the investment report this full year 2023, quarter two. 12.3, resolution number 22-79, a resolution authorizing a site use agreement with McHenry County Snowmobile Association, Huntley Penguins and Marango Snowgoers for the 2022, 2023 winter season. 12.4, resolution number 22-80, a resolution authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with Marango Township Road District for the procurement of road salt for the 2022, 2023 winter season. 12.5, resolution number 21-81, a resolution authorizing the agreement for five additional block banners with the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Northern and Middle States rule law enforcement training and technical assistance grant program for a total of $25,000. 12.6, resolution number 22-82, a resolution authorizing the execution of conservation grazing lease agreement for rotational goat grazing operation at Green and Prairie Conservation Area to Catherine Sims and Dickinsons Jr. for a period of three years from November 1, 2022, to December 1, 2025. 12.7, resolution number 22-83, a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest qualified bidders of Prairie Nursery of Winona, Minnesota, 38,429.27 cents. Shooting Star Native Seeds of Spring Grove, Minnesota, 27,727.9 cents. Spence Restoration Nursery of Muncie, Indiana, 22,254.83 cents. Agricole LLC of Evansville, Wisconsin, 9,249.90 cents. Genesis Nursery, Inc. of Tampico, Illinois, 2,921.25 cents. And Ford No. in 8 of Walk Burton, Indiana, 924 dollars for the total cost not to exceed 101,101,506 101,5634 cents for the completion of seeding, yes? I said it right, right? Good. For the completion of seeding projects on approximately 146 acres of various habitats for projects within conservation areas. Resolution number 22-84, a resolution authorizing the disposal, disposal of listed excess equipment and office items through a public online auction with Obenoff Auction Services, Inc. of Round Lake, Illinois. Resolution number 22-89, a resolution ratifying the executive director's execution of a contract with Constellation New Energy of Houston, Texas, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the electric service at 15 district sites for a amount not to exceed point 09897 per kilowatt hour for one year beginning November 2022. 12.10, resolution number 22-86, a resolution authorizing the execution of agreement documents with Illinois Fire Institute to provide both the S-130 field day and S-218 ignition operations trains. 12.11, resolution number 22-87, a resolution authorizing the execution of listed agricultural leases with terms beginning March 1, 2023, on 14 parcels containing approximately 898 plus or minus acres. 12.12, resolution number 22-88, a resolution authorizing the execution of listed joint grassland venture leases with terms beginning March 1, 2023, on 10 parcels containing approximately 502 plus or minus acres. 12.13, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to secure joint grassland venture leasing of 10.6 plus or minus acres at all the gap conservation area. 12.14, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to secure joint grassland venture leasing of 7.8 plus or minus acres at Fox Conservation Area. 12.15, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to secure joint grassland venture leasing of 27.5 plus or minus acres at Buggin Valley Conservation Area. 12.16, resolution number 22-89, a resolution approving a first amendment to employment agreement between McHenry County Conservation, Conservation District and Executive Director Elizabeth Passler. 12.17, resolution number 22-90, a resolution authorizing the purchase of six replacement vehicles directly from Illinois State, with purchasing contract for a total cost not to exceed $299,000.
And the second, my check. And we vote.
Trustee Gayden.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Everard.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Treasurer Fred.
Yes.
President Nico.
Yes. Thank you. We'll recognize Linda for. Underboard business, I think we're gonna come to the treasure.
And need a 13.1, approval of bills payable for the month of September 2022.
You're gonna do these individually? 13.1?
13.1 is 13 to do the internal audit first, and then 13 would be.
Is there anybody that, did anybody call anything?
No, I haven't.
I did not. I didn't go there, I did not this time.
Okay, and then 13.1B, consideration to include the payment of bills, denicated and submission of bills pending report for the month ending September 30. of bills pending report for the month ending September 30.
All right, and the second, second, one second, and the vote.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Treasurer Everard?
Yes.
And trustee Everard, I'm sorry. Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
President Epp?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've got a few things here to, just to go through. First of all, in your report, you've got all our quarterly reports. So if there's any specific questions on the dashboard, the DVD plan, all of that information is there, but happy to answer questions if there were any from that. We're just finishing up quarter two. And let's see again, number three. Legislative wise, we know we have an election coming up on November 8. And Cook County has a proposition going forward with the Forest Reserve of County. So we are watching that. We've been working with the Illinois Environmental Council. They're working on a variety of things with lead pipes and water. Navigable waterways is one that's been of particular interest for us. And so we stay involved with them and the Illinois Association of Park Districts. So as well as just some general focused work on our continued work with the EPA on water and water continuation issues. So that continues to be in full force. The CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency of Planning is having an open house where they go to 2050 Plan on Thursday, October 27, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At the Bestower Dune Museum in Libertyville, Illinois. That's an open invite reception with the Board of Commissioners of the Forest Reserve District and CMAP. So if anyone's interested in attending that, I did send that out, but just letting you know we'll get you on the guest list to attend. The Chicago Wilderness Congress, we have that on November 3, and that is in the afternoon. Some great speakers. We will have Deborah Shore from the Environmental EPA Protection Agency will be there as our keynote and others, direct power hand from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So that is the University of Chicago forum. And again, that's a great opportunity. We will be launching our new branding, which our team, and I think I'm hearing Wendy Comer sat on our branding team and communicated to kind of develop our framework messaging. Our planning manager and development Peters has been serving on the conference planning committee with partners and many others assisting all of them. So encouraged, that's a great opportunity to attend. The Environmental Defenders of McHenry County on November 5 has the Green Living Expo and the Henry County College. The Friends of Pact Attack will be celebrating their 10th anniversary, believe it or not, 10 years on November 8, which is election eve at the Doyle Mansion, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. And I'm assuming there's still opportunities, limited seating, so if you're interested in attending that, that is something to get involved with. It's election night, yes, yeah. So as the results come in and all of that, so, but that's, that's a great celebration. Ed will be speaking, Assistant Director John Wagner from IDNR will also be speaking. Let's see here, the, the Henry County held a community health assessment implementation plan, which was attended. This is a project where actually Director of Operations, Plan and Public Safety has been very involved with the MAP Plan, with going kind of their initiatives. And I think there's a sweet spot for us to be working as far as our work with the natural resources and health initiatives to what the county is doing on that. And a shout out to our team from Natural Resources and Val Seiler. We did receive word that the grant from Illinois Clean Energy Foundation has been received from a land acquisition parcel. So that will, has been awarded, and I'll put more information to you in the weekly update. And lastly, I was at the last McHenry County Board Meeting that we had. I was elected as Vice Chair of the Henry County Natural, Henry County Air Management. We'll be going to McHenry County as soon as President.
Elizabeth, be so kind to maybe send out an email with just bullet points of the date. There's so many, and I know you've been so nice of trying to get us involved. And I've kept some, but it would be nice, maybe they have just a shorter list for us. So see if I can fit any of those in my calendar.
That would be, I will do that. I would also suggest if any trustees have an interest in attending the Illinois Association, Illinois Association of Park Districts annual conference in January, we will need to know who our first delegate is going to be for the business meeting, second and third alternate. Trustee Zimmerman has expressed an interest in attending the conference. But please let me know, and we'll fill that in and bring that in November for you to see if you submit that slate. And then last month, or last meeting, we talked about the calendar for next year, when to approve on dates. And were there any changes that anybody had on the dates that we were planning for our meetings? Okay, so we packaged that up all as is and bring that forward. And then the date for the special call meeting is the 14th of February at LBC. Did I look at that in email?
Elizabeth, do we need to do anything regarding the letters of support or were those just?
Relatively disinformational item, keep everybody informed. The McHenry County Council of Government has their monthly meeting. So I don't know if anybody's going to that.
They also have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning about their legislative priorities. I bet that's open to everybody too.
All right, do any of, any of the trustees wish to say anything at this time, given your board? On behalf of the board, I'd like to express our condolences to Elizabeth and her extended family. They've suffered the two deaths, deaths are always untimely, but two deaths of family members. So I think I.
That's Lisa and I agree.
Well, but it's our work, you need to take care of yourself and you should allow yourself to gain flexibility, that you would allow any of the board or any of the staff that they were dealing with health or family issues. So. You're in our thoughts if you can relate that to your family. Okay, any, any public comments at this point? Any other business, go there?
I have one thing, it's, it's kind of, we're grazing, you know, grazing bison. Out in Montana, they're replacing cattle with bison. And it's like 63,500 acres, and they passed this like law or something, BLM land. So all the little communities and the ranches, they're all up in arms because, you know, when you sell cattle, they, they graze and they sell cattle so that little communities, that, you know, the money that they get, that keeps them going. But bison, that's just, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to market them. It's just free, yeah, free, free grain of national parks. Well, I read that was in this magazine, so that's where in the, stuff that we have, they're actually going to sell them.
You saw hunting licenses or something?
No, nothing. They're just, just, just grazing, just, you know, wandering.
I always thought out west, there was an issue with brucellosis and whether the bison in Yellowstone, they got beyond the park and they mixed with cattle.
They chewed or something, yeah.
You know, there was the risk of.
Those are, you know, they're wild. But I guess that's what they're going to release. You know, it's not like farmers or people that raise bison, you know, you can let some of your herd out there, they're just going to.
Just open.
Yeah.
A while less.
A lot less.
All right. Any, any other comments? Brad, we appreciate all your efforts to work towards some solution that's good for all parties involved, and it's no mobile.
The whole staff involved eventually, I'm sure.
Well, I, I.
Just send him in first.
We got the police department backing up.
Pass it over, right now it's not over.
No saying, squeaky wheel, it's agreeable.
Well, my comment, and I sent an email around to some of the staff, was that perfection is sometimes the enemy of good enough. So when you work towards a solution, the solution is what you're after. Everyone sometimes has to give a little to come to a solution.
I think that you said with the last meeting, though, you said something like, if there's a solution out there, then should accommodate everyone, but probably won't make anyone happy.
Yeah. Okay, well, very good. Let's have a motion.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas? Yes. Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
President Epp?
Yes.